chosen to represent the people of the parish beg of thee oh mighty god to enlighten our minds so that our work will be just and fair in all things. Give us the courage and strength to fulfill our duties according to the laws of the land. And in so doing fulfilling also thy holy will on earth and in heaven through christ our lord amen.
Amen.
Mr. Alexander would you lead us in the pledge? Alexander would you lead us in the pledge?
You said this that it doesn't?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Our pledge of allegiance.
Is to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
The republic of the.
And to the republic which is safe. My nation. And that. In the business of liberty and justice for all.
A roll call district one mister fusily.
Here.
District two is a job at ease.
Here.
District three misses northeast.
Here.
District four mister.
Here.
District five mister toesan.
Here.
District six mister up on.
Here.
District seven mister Alexander. District nine mister Richard.
Here.
And the chair is here. Also here present past president Chester Cedars will also have the direct administrator. Albert A bear director of public worst case for the director of finance mister Sean Huntley. Uh the clerk of court Lacy Laprue's district clerk of council Brooke Gillespie. And also uh I believe mister duron is on our parish attorney. I need I'll entertain a motion now to uh approve the the minutes of the regular meeting of April sixteenth two thousand twenty.
I make a motion. I make a.
I have a motion by mister toesan second usually. Ready for the vote? Mister fusily.
Yes.
This is about these.
Yes.
Yes.
The four year.
Yes.
Mister toesan.
Yes.
Mister shop on. It's shop on your mute.
Yes, sorry.
Mister Alexander.
Yes.
Mister Richard.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. The motion carried unanimously.
Item six persons to address the council there are none. Item seven special business Roddy Matherne general manager of Pelican waste and debris LLC to discuss remedial action for delinquent accounts.
Mr. Mr. Mister chairperson if I may uh Chester seed is parish president. I had requested a mister Matherne appear uh before the council as a result of of the notification that Pelican would be asserting its rights to pick up various containers. Waste disposal containers uh for customers who were delinquent in their accounts. I felt that before that kind of action would be taken uh that appearance before the council would be a very prudent so that you could vet any concerns or make sure all your questions were answered relative to that decision. Thank you.
Mister Matherne you're on.
So I'm on you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, uh I had talked to uh Chester uh what about two weeks ago maybe cast a week ago somewhere around that. Can't remember it's it's with this covid nineteen it's uh you know working from home and doing just I mean technology uh we we here to do this uh you know our office we use Microsoft teams. Which is a great tool as well uh but anyway I just kinda went to uh address the residents that are you know we we've entered a contract for nine months now and we have still about thirty five of non paying residents um so we've been going through uh the the areas and tagging cans uh last week we did district six seven eight nine and part of five and next week we want to do district one two three and four. And then we'll finish up part of five um so we've we've already did some tagging before and we was very successful at it. And then we we did some more tagging and and the ones that we do in a second tag uh I wanted to address the council and and the parishes to let them know that we you know the next action will probably start removing carts uh so if we have a non paying customers um so you know this date from July first when we started to now and we did a lot of credits and all that. We haven't collect over half a million dollars of um late um residents that have not paid they have some residents just refuse to pay said never paid for garbage before and we'll pay for it now so um you know I just wanted like I said come to y'all guys and address it and let y'all know if y'all do get a few phone calls. Uh we're gonna try to take it as slow as we can and and progress throughout uh and uh get some cans removed and and maybe it may uh let people know that uh you know once we do that they'll have to call back for their their cards. Get their service back in uh service.
Mister Matherne. Yeah, I have a question. I mean what's the form of you have a formal procedural process that y'all following to uh to do this I mean I know the uh the ordinance calls for initially you you if you're late you get a ten percent late fee on your bill and then uh after at some point you should be contacting the the parish to uh so that we can uh cite cite the ones that don't want to pay uh for penalty.
We've uh unfortunate covid nineteen came along so it was hard to you know face to face with the parish or do anything but the first six months are the first two quarter of billing we have not uh did a uh a late fee but we've done it in the last uh billing we've done uh and still have not gotten no respond to it now um well we've been fine and since we've been on the road there was a lot of empty lots and we've took that off and um you know we get into manageable amount of residents that are um you know it's it's kinda around fourteen thousand five hundred it looks like it'll be total. Maybe a little less but it's uh you know we started off with a a big nine one one address list where we got with the water company we went from twenty one thousand addresses to now we to a management of about you know fourteen thousand somewhat number of residents that really exist in the parish. Not lots uh I think what happened is nine one one when a lot is subdivided it gets an address. So uh and it gets a name whoever owns the lot so we we found a lot of vacant lots and uh are we also found a lot of abandoned homes so that they have no card so we've we've removed that off the list.
My main concern is when you start uh picking up trash can that it's not arbitrary you know that you do it consistent throughout the parish. And that you have a set a set guideline that that overdo by one month or two months or four months whatever you decide that is before you do that and and you treat everyone the same throughout the whole parish and not be arbitrary and say I'm gonna go pick up all the trash cans in uh in the north end or or midsection or the south end you know.
No, we we we're actually gonna do it like I said we've we've actually wanted to tag and give everybody an opportunity and tag every cart. And uh you know we went and did a second round of tagging and uh now we are in the process of you know we're gonna be following uh the route. It's gonna be you know Monday route we may be on Monday picking up in that district if it's Tuesday route we'll be on Tuesday. Cause we'll have to follow the trucks and we won't just bear to go in in any district and just pick up carts and and but I don't think it will be you know we're not gonna pick up like three or four hundred carts a day because that's would be impossible.
What's the criteria you use it to pick up the court how late do they have to be?
Uh well I mean if they're over six months uh I think it's uh you know they haven't paid anything uh then we need to look at that so.
How many did you get a call in?
I'm sorry. Uh when we uh when we tagged we had a lot of successful call ins um but we still have quite a bit that has not uh either called or just refused to pay.
Anyone else have?
There's several there's several people that have more than one address you know they might have a extra something they inherited so that's probably why they're not paying on some of these.
Right, we we yeah we uh we we have when we were out there tagging they might have had uh like A B C address you know uh the same address but it might have been A B and C and we've uh we've addressed all of those we took that off the list um so it it's it's been a long nine months tedious process uh and we've been removing a lot of those duplicates of the list that might have it you you're right they might have been inherited a property or 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 there's multiple uh I guess subdivided property and they may have multiple uh A B C D and then there's a lot of numbers and so we removed a lot of that off the list.
Mister chairperson um this is Chester Cedars again uh I just wanna make sure um that um that anyone who gets their container picked up or indeed is indeed delinquent uh we have we do get the calls here at parish government. We're not supposed to be getting them but we do and we address them and even on that last list that was disseminated to all of you which we received from Pelican a few weeks ago. Uh we got calls of from a couple of customers saying look we we've we've paid our bills we get double billed. Uh so I I just wanna make sure that that Pelican uh when they go out to pick up those cans they're actually picking up cans at at places residences lots whatever that are truly uh delinquent um because I can I can assure you our personnel here at parish government will get the calls.
Yeah, uh let me say this and uh Dane I think you addressed this is I can send you a uh what our process and all the council and and the parish president our process of what we're gonna do and also I can send all y'all a daily report of what area will be in and what target we may um you know what carts we may be uh I guess repossessing uh picking up or something so y'all can all be on the same page and everybody knows and understands what's going on.
And we we definitely from the parish government perspective would like to know whose carts were picked up. Because that means that they're now not participating in the mandatory program and there are penalties as mister LeBlanc referenced earlier that needs to be addressed.
Well, that's a correct yeah and if you remember Chester we had talked about me with the DA and and all that on that of course all of this happened and uh kinda being put on a process uh but yeah absolutely anything that's gonna be picked up will be sent to the parish office to let y'all know that why it was picked up.
And when you talk about assessing penalties against people of this nature that makes it even more important as mister LeBlanc observed that we have a non arbitrary process in place.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm fully in support of you know collecting from those that haven't been paid or or taking trash cans if they're not participate. Just wanna make sure that the process is 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 not arbitrary.
Mister chairman I have I have a question for our guest.
Okay, mister Alexander.
I'd like to ask you uh mister Robbie down manager of Pelican lease. Did you ever consider in the customers mentally and you know those that's on fixed income look like they will have a problem with a quarterly bill where would you did you ever consider the monthly bill the way they were doing it before which would be a smaller a smaller payment?
Uh mister Alexander we got about twenty five hundred customers that are paying only monthly because of the fixed income so we are working with those residents. On that so we do have a you know uh I say a small portion that we are working with um I mean over twenty five hundred customers that are you know paid partially or paid when they can each month.
So you say it's optional then when you send them the you know the statement is optional they can either pay monthly if they want their truth to do so?
Well, I mean I'm not saying it's optional but we've been we understand that we there is people that are on fixed income that just can't pay three months in advance. So we are working with those uh elderly people.
Mister Alexander maybe I can also weigh in on this issue when the the new program was bid um it was bid for quarterly payments. Uh before the the former provider or before the former contract expired the billing to the uh to the parish was every four months as opposed to every three months. Then it was reduced for every monthly billing and it stayed that way to this contract expired and when we when we went out for RFP's request for proposals for the current contract it was for quarterly billing because the amount is less.
Okay.
And and I just wanna let y'all know too because of the you know stay at home order they have a lot more people putting out trash and garbage and so the garbage has been in the last two months extremely heavy um so you know this I mean there's no additional charge to the resident but it's because of the stay at home order we've we've been facing a lot of having to put additional equipment on the road as well um I mean not only in St. Martin Parish but Caribou Biloxi um everywhere we pick up debris pickup it you know and of course the garbage itself is heavy as well.
Anybody have any other comments or questions?
I got a question.
Mister four year.
Uh if I think I understood you correct before y'all go in in each district collect cans for non payment. You will notify the council person for that district?
What we can uh we can send I have a Chester wants to do it uh you know uh or the council wants to do it we can send y'all information of the delinquent addresses and that you know will be in that area um whatever district it is on Monday collection will be.
I would just like to know when you start gathering the cans in 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 my district uh if you could let me know a day in advance or something just so I'm aware in case I get any phone calls.
Sure, yeah, no, look, we we got a good process we've uh I guess we perfection it in the last nine months. Uh we definitely can do that uh we can send y'all uh you know something like Friday and this is what we're gonna do next week you know.
I appreciate it.
Hey Rod, would it be possible that each council person get a a list of the addresses in their district of who is delinquent and who's not? And allow like I give us a chance to go through them. I was looking at some of the ones that you sent the other day and I know some of those people even though it's not in my district there was a few people I know that don't even live here anymore in in this area that moved and stuff so maybe if we could see a list by district each council person maybe we could kinda there's some names we take off whatever we can get which you and let you know who they are.
But but if they don't live here they shouldn't have cans.
Yeah, but Chester not everybody's got a can but what's happening there's people I I a relative of mine that lives in Daniel's district. His name is on that list and he lives in Texas and he's been living in Texas probably the past five years but he might still have property.
Gotcha, I understand he has no cans he's just getting the bill alright.
Gotta be honest.
Yeah, we we still got a little bit left to go on the process of of there's an empty lot or uh there may be a rental property that they may be getting a bill and it's being rented to someone else so.
But you still have a lot of multiple billing people get more than one bill.
Correct, yes.
I just think if we all by district with each council person we get that a that list for their district it would kinda help us to go through it and see who they are maybe we could save you a little time and trouble right there.
Absolutely.
I agree with.
I agree.
I can send that list uh by tomorrow.
Alright, thanks, Rob.
No problem.
Any other questions? Mister Matherne is um my understanding mister Tito wants to speak.
Is he online?
I don't know I thought he might have been with you.
No, no, he wasn't with me.
Okay.
I I think he thought we were gonna be at a meeting.
Okay, alright.
Okay.
Okay, no further questions uh thank you, mister Matherne.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eight ordinances introduced for public hearing there are none. Item nine resolutions. Summary number zero three two RS a resolution proclaiming the month of May two thousand twenty as official air quality awareness month in St. Morton Parish.
I have a motion by mister fusily I hear a second.
Second.
Second by mister toesan. Anyone want to speak on the motion? Ready for the vote? Mister fusily. Mister fusily how do you vote? This is John.
Daniel keeps cutting me out.
This is Narcisse.
Yes.
Mister four year.
Yes.
Mister toesan.
Yes.
Mister shop on.
Yes.
Mister Alexander.
Yes.
Mister Richard.
Yeah.
Yes, motion carried unanimously.
Summary number zero three three RS a resolution reappointing Ms. Pamela Lamoyne to serve as a member of the sixteenth judicial district children and youth planning board.
I have a motion by mister Zabatiz I hear a second.
I'll second it.
Second by mister fusily anyone care to comment? Ready for the vote mister fusily.
Yes.
This is Robert tease.
Yes.
This is Narcisse.
Yes.
Mister four year.
Yes.
Mister toesan.
Yes.
Mister shop on.
Yes.
Alexander.
Yes.
Mister Richard.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes motion carried unanimously.
Summary number zero three four RS a resolution authorizing and approving the parish president to execute change order number three in the amount of one hundred eighteen thousand three hundred fifty one dollars and six cents increase and a one hundred sixteen day contract time extension for the Cade Park Pavilion basketball court and paving project by JC Construction.
Mister Cedars you create a comment?
Yeah, I would like to comment very briefly um uh this is one of those change orders that I did not want to sign before bringing it to the uh the council because of the amount of the change uh that's a substantial sum. Uh just wanted to let you know that I did have some personal conversations with our project manager mister Babino as well as the architect and contractor. Uh I wanted to make sure this this um hundred eighteen thousand change order which is substantial uh was within the scope of the contract and it wasn't something that we just pulled from the air because of the amount and uh it was not it still falls within the scope of the contract. The most significant part of this change order is for some large uh vent uh fans high velocity fans around the basketball court area. I have they're called a big ASS fans and that's the literal name of them uh we have them in other uh two other of our parks. They're 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 expensive but they do the job they work very well um and so I was satisfied that there was you know that we would be within the scope of the contract uh by granting this change order I would also I wanted to also make sure that it would be functional that it would serve a purpose. And after having met with or talked to the architect and the um general contractor you know they convinced me that it was and this all occurred in early March. So I just wanted to impart that information to you that that it was vetted um again particularly because of that amount.
Thank you, Mister Cedars.
It is still within budget it's still within budget.
I have a motion by mister Zabatiz I hear a second.
I'll second it.
Second by mister Alexander.
That's fine.
Ready for the I saw you reaching for you.
I'll second.
Yeah. Ready for the uh vote uh mister fusily.
Yes.
This is Robert tease.
Yes.
This is Narcisse.
Yes.
Mister four year.
Yes.
Mister toesan.
Yes.
Mister shop on.
Yes.
Mister Alexander.
Yes.
Mister Richard.
Yes.
The chair votes yes motion carried unanimously.
Item ten ordinances introduced for publication there are none. Item eleven informational items not requiring council action parish president Chester Cedars to provide an update on the covid nineteen crisis and other matters.
Mister Cedars.
Thank you uh it's it's gonna be hard because normally when I talk too long I can I can I know that I'm going over the time I ought to um and I should because I read the body language of mister toesan so it's gonna be hard for me to gauge his reaction now as I go over this. The first thing I wanna uh point out uh for the public is that our council chambers are open. Uh and this um meeting is being broadcast on our big screens that that we uh that we project on during our regular meetings and we do have the press some members of the press uh in the chambers I'm in my office. I also want to establish just for the record that the reason we had to do this remotely is because of the ten person limitation that's still in effect under the governor's executive orders. Uh we have nine council members we have the parish president who by charter has to be present as well as our clerk uh who has to be present so we would have if we would have had it regular um that you know in person we would exceeded that limit. Also um these meetings these um remote meetings now we I think using zoom there's other uh providers out there I've used quite a few different providers since the uh crisis has begun and there's a positive I guess is that I have learned that this is very a very effective way to do business in our meetings. Uh as you know we have to meet frequently with engineers and sometimes lawyers and other uh professionals who charge us to travel to come meet with us and who charges by the hour for that travel time uh I intend to have zoom meetings or to have these type of uh webinar type meetings whenever plausible and I think we're gonna ultimately save some money in terms of uh professional charges by having these type of uh remote meetings and I think some of you in the business world have been doing that for a long time and you know what I'm talking about. We also uh wanted just to let everyone know that although our agenda was a little bit light we wanted to get back on our normal rotation. The first Tuesday our regular meeting and our second Tuesday having our um our committee meetings and we will get back to that schedule although we will have a special meeting also matters uh before our committee meeting on May nineteenth. I wanna start with some positive news. We uh continued our bid processes even though we could have suspended them under the governor's executive orders we continue to to call for bids on some of our projects two of them were were the restore act projects for the floating piers at Catahoula park in Uncle Dick Davis Park. Well, we had four hundred thousand dollars budgeted for those two uh projects the bids came in last Wednesday on April twenty nine. The low bid was one hundred eighty four thousand dollars so we were um very much within budget. The uh restore at council has deposited in our account uh four hundred thousand dollars so we we're looking into what else we could do with that additional monies within the scope of uh the restore act itself so we're very pleased with with that development. You will remember at our last meeting I advised you that the Henderson Volunteer Fire Department had received a reduction in their fire rating from a class five to a class four. I'm pleased to announce that today I received a letter that the Stevensville Volunteer Fire Department had also has also received a reduction in its fail rating from a class five to a class four uh that's big news. And and that just speaks very highly of our volunteer firemen it speaks very highly of uh the administration at the fire service district mister Brody Miller mister David Dugay um their work is having a lot of positive uh results. Last night I had a meeting with the library board of control I've had some personal discussions with some of you in the past. I've had some personal discussions with some of you in the past. One of the millages that funds the library system is coming up for renewal in the fall election. You will be voting at the special meeting on May nineteenth to call, to formally call for that election. I will be sending each of you a detailed report within, by the end of this week, outlining all of the parameters associated with that renewal, that millage. The library board was very pleased with some of the ideas that I advanced relative to the renewal. And then there's going to be a little bit of a rededication of a portion of that millage as well. But I'm going to give you specifics on that so that you will be fully prepared to vet that issue as, as the future develops. COVID nineteen updates. Got a lot to talk about here, but I'll, I'll be very brief on most of it because I post very regularly developments with parish government relative to COVID nineteen. As all of you know, last Monday, on April twenty-seventh, the governor announced that the stay-at-home order would be extended and there would not be a reopening of some of the businesses under phase one of the gating requirements that we had anticipated. I've addressed that in some of my posts, I won't go over very much about that. Other than on that very day, all of our employees returned. Some of them had been, most of them had been working remotely, as you will recall. But on April twenty-seventh, they, everybody came, we, we were fully staffed. We had, we're operating under some protocol, you know, checking temperatures of everybody in the morning, wearing masks when we go out in public, disinfecting all of our workstations multiple times a day. So things are going real well. The spirit of our employees is second to none. I think everybody was excited to, to get back to the workplace and working. So I'm very happy with all the developments there. Have made some decisions, as you know, our parks, parks were open last Friday, May first. The only exceptions is that our pavilions stayed closed. The playground equipment, however, was open for the children. And all our ball fields and basketball courts still remain closed. But our parks are being used and happy for that. As you know, our restaurants were allowed by executive order last week to offer outdoor dining without table service and under certain other restrictions. That's going pretty well, too. Also, religious services can now be outdoors with restrictions. That came about Friday afternoon late. I was on the phone with several people late Friday afternoon and, and a significant part of Saturday, speaking to some of our clergy, sending them all the protocols they had to follow to open as dictated by the Department of Health in the Fire Marshal. But I understand that that went very well to all of our outdoor services. What I did, I made an exception on the pavilions. Any pavilion in our park that could be used for outdoor services, I am allowing that for outdoor religious services only. I think, you know, I think that's a very worthy endeavor and it's, it's under controlled circumstances relative to the religious services. Along those same lines, Thursday for the National Day of Prayer, allowing the courthouse lawn to be utilized for services for, for that, in connection with that day. I think it begins at six thirty P M. I invite you to come. I think if you ever needed a time to pray, I think this is probably it. I'm not trying to proselyze, I'm just pointing out that that opportunity is going to be available pursuant to all the guidelines announced by the governor and the state Fire Marshal. Thursday, this Thursday, Uncle Dick Davis RV Park operated by the parish will be open for business. I remind everyone that this is Mother's Day weekend, so I thought it would be a good time to open it. There's a lot of people up to use our recreational parks on that day. The opening of our offices is a day-by-day thing. And when I say opening of the offices, I mean opening of the parish facilities for, to the public. I said, I'm analyzing that on a day-to-day basis because of a lot of the criteria that we want to look at is ever-changing, but ever-changing positively. As I sit here now, I anticipate that we will be open May eighteenth at the latest. And I have some protocols that I'm preparing for the public when they come to meet with us, what they have to have, you know, like masks. And I'm also developing protocols for our employees as well when we interact with the public in our, in our workplaces. But I will keep you informed. It may be before May eighteenth, a lot's going to depend on what the numbers dictate relative to some of the positive tests that, that are coming back. One of the most significant things that we started working on about two weeks ago is our hurricane preparations. This COVID nineteen is really causing our O E P officials to do a lot of studying, as well as the state facilities, the governor's office of homeland security and emergency preparedness. For example, sheltering the people. That's going to be materially affected by the, by the current crisis that we're faced with. And even transporting people to a shelter, that's going to pose some, some challenging task, as well as the distribution of flood mitigation measures such as sandbags. But all of that is being planned and worked on as we speak. We'll, we'll have something in place very shortly. The hurricane season begins on, on June one. I know what I'm going to be praying for on the National Day of Prayer, one of the things is going to be no hurricanes. I have also examined very closely some of the stay-at-home orders, beginning with the most significant one that was March twenty-second of this year. But even going before that, twenty-seven J B E twenty twenty, which was issued on March sixteenth. Let me assure you, members of the council, and let me assure the public that we have done everything from a parish government perspective to ensure that as many businesses that could legally be open were indeed and are indeed open. Y'all have read about some of the gray area businesses and some of the middle-of-the-road businesses. There was a great deal of confusion about those businesses and rightfully so. Because the governor's executive order thirty-three J B E twenty twenty that was issued on March twenty-second did lead one to, to be a little uncertain as he or she tried to interpret that order. I, I apparently had some issues too. Early on, in fact, I had some phone calls from officials in Baton Rouge relative to the parameters of that order. It was issued on March twenty-second. March twenty-fifth, we in Saint Martin Parish had clarified our confusion. And in fact, I invite you to look at my post on March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty, where I outlined the, the parameters of that particular stay-at-home order. And also, as a result of some confusion that still existed, I did a post last week of Facebook recording where we talked about the businesses. So we've been pretty well aware of some of the businesses that people initially thought couldn't be open, could indeed be open. And we've been, been fully trying to advance that, that information beginning March twenty-fifth of this year. So, but I'm pleased to see some of the businesses now starting to get back up and running that could legally be up and running. Also, in anticipation of the phase one reopening of those businesses that were absolutely closed, such as our nail salons, barber shops, places like that, I formed a committee a couple of weeks ago to start working with the parish government to make sure that everyone knew what the rules were when we entered the phase one reopening. We're going to, we're continuing to do our work as a committee. I have prepared some preliminary parameters and rules and restrictions that we anticipate may be coming down. If they don't come down, then we will remove those. And however, we do, we have developed some safety recommendations. And we do that for two reasons. Number one, we want businesses to operate and we want them to operate safely. But more importantly, we want to encourage patrons to patronize that business. And one of the ways we can help people feel safe to do business is to kind of let them know that businesses are not only open, but they're open pursuant to safety protocols. So that will hopefully encourage people to circulate and start getting around so we can commence to return to normality. You know, I have a, we did not meet last Monday, and I posted this and talked about this in my post. We didn't meet one of the gating criteria. As you know, I've had some meetings with some epidemiologists from the Department of Health, had a meeting yesterday together with some other parish presidents. And we're hoping that the manner of applying the positive cases that we have to the guidelines will take into consideration several factors that I don't think have heretofore been considered. For example, I think it's important that we eliminate from our evaluation those cases that are clusters, those cases that arise from confined environments like a long-term care facility, such as a nursing home. Because those aren't communal cases, those are cases that are confined. So cases in a confined area ought not be used as a negative when we're trying to determine how many positive cases are there out in the community. Okay? And the epidemiologists with whom we spoke said, yeah, you're right. We definitely need that to be a factor among all the other factors that we look at, as well as the number of people who have recovered. You remember, you know, we, the numbers that we had twenty days ago really should have recovered by now. And that should not be looked at as the total number of potential positive cases. So I'm very optimistic that we're making headway by working with our, our state leaders, by working with the governor's office so that we will meet those gating requirements, not only as a parish, not only as a region, but as a state, so that we can get back to our normal lifestyle, so that our business partners who, upon whom we rely can get back and resume their business operations. Again, we're working very, very diligently with them and will continue to do so, as well as working with all the other leaders in our parish. And to an extent, working with all the other parish presidents and parish government officials in Acadia. The big question I know that you have is, okay, what's going to be our financial impact as a result of this, this, this crisis? The COVID nineteen crisis? Still don't know, remember on April sixteenth, in our meeting, I commented on it. Still don't know. We will probably, probably have a better picture. Sean Huntley, our director of finance, and I talked about this yesterday. We will be getting our numbers from our sales tax collections for May, for April at the end of this month. And we'll have a better understanding at that point in time, what we're looking at financially. We can tell you now that we will lose a lot of video poker revenue. We've already lost it, we've been shut down for probably over two months. So we're going to lose significant revenue in that arena. And we depend on, on our video poker revenue substantially for a lot of, of our programs and a lot of our maintenance work. And that's how we subsidize some of our mandated requirements, such as the judicial system. So we're looking at that as we go. With that, that's all I had to say. Certainly will be more than happy to entertain any questions any of you may have.
I have a question, Mr. President.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes. I'd, I'd like to know is, do we plan to have a COVID nineteen testing site in Saint Martin Parish? Or testing sites in Saint Martin Parish?
Very good question indeed. The state is planning a mobile testing sites. I have had discussions with our health units, as well as Dr. Stefanski, about locating the mobile sites in Saint Martin Parish. And to answer your question directly, the answer is going to be yes. They're doing that by region. And right now, they're working on the, I want to say it's the Ascension Parish region, the New Orleans region. I think they're going, starting tomorrow, there will be mobile sites in region, I forget the numbers, but it's the Monroe regions. They're hitting the hotspots first, but we will have mobile testing sites, not just testing, we got testing sites now with the clinics and some of the walk-in facilities. But I'm interested in a mobile testing site. And I hope that we have that in place, working with the state by the end, by the end of the month, certainly by the end of the month. The governor's objective is to have over two hundred, the ability to administer over two hundred tests statewide. But it's a statewide plan that we're working with and not necessarily independent of right now. But yes, that is something that's being worked on.
Thank you.
Any other questions for?
Mr. Chester.
Mr. Fugile.
Yeah, before your question, Mr. Fugile, Mr. Alexander, also the National Guard is helping with those mobile testing sites, by the way. Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Fugile.
Thank you very much.
We still have flooding problems in, in Lower Saint Martin. I want to thank Shane and them for all the hard work they're doing. You know, water goes up, goes down, but it's not going down quickly like we want. I just looked at it, it's at two point seven right now, which is, is not good. We have some streets flooded. But I just want to get out and, and tell him guys how hard they, you know, everybody, to know that, how hard they working. They're really doing a good job.
And, and that is really baffling. I had a conversation earlier today about that. And it was at two, six, one, and now you're telling me it's even a little higher. The perplexing things about that, Mr. Fugile, is that my understanding, you know, water's flowing out, it's flowing into Bayou Beth, you know, and nobody can really, I mean, I don't understand why it's not dropping any better.
Right.
Quicker. But yeah, you're right, Shane and that work crew have been very diligent. Just to let y'all know, we have pumps. And when we had the, the inclement weather recently, somebody went and cut the pumps off at two o'clock in the morning. And Shane had to get up and, and go and, and cut those pumps back on. And that's just, I wish people would be a little bit more considerate. But yeah, but Shane and his crew have done just a yeoman's job in managing, managing that. I think we've got about four streets in certain areas that are underwater. And, and I mean, also say that Pelican's work pretty well with us too. Because you know, when those streets go underwater, there's an issue with collecting of, of the, of the trash. You know, I fuss about Pelican a lot, but they've, they've come to our, to our aid in that regard. And we're trying to locate some more, we're trying to find a mechanism where we can maybe find another site for another dumpster for waste pickup.
All right, that's all I have, thank you.
Any other councilman?
Yeah, Chester.
Mr. Tozan.
Chester, I, do you, do you anticipate the governor extending this thing any further? And if he, if he was, if he was to, something just to consider. You know, most of our cases over here, our dead cases and everything have been within clusters with, with the nursing homes and all. I know there's a big push right now by Senator Hewitt and a few other people to try to get a parish by parish opening. And hopefully, the whole state opens up and get everybody back up and running. But do you, would you anticipate that the governor, if he does, that there could be, you know, that, same way in parish? Could we look to try to get, you know, to get our parish moving?
I don't think you're going to see a parish by parish opening, Mr. Tozan. Of course, this is all speculation, okay?
Right.
Yeah. Because I thought we would have a phase one opening on April twenty-seventh or, but, May first, I thought we would have a phase one reopening. I, I think you may see a regional open, I think the governor will consider a regional opening. And that's one of the reasons that the analysis that I mentioned about excluding those clusters from, as a factor. Or if you're going to include them, include them as a positive factor, factor towards, meaning considering as what is predominating for a reopening, not the other way around. as what is predominating for a reopening, not the other way around. I, I think, I think, I think you're gonna see a reopening by region, if not statewide. But keep in mind that on April twenty seventh now, this is what's important. On April twenty seventh, the, one of the regions that had not met the second criterion under the, the guidelines, under the gating criteria, was region four, our region, the Acadiana region. We had not met the second criterion, which was a fourteen consecutive day of, of a downward trend. And we were mentioning that together with the Baton Rouge region, and I think the region in, in the Monroe area, some of the hotspots that we initially saw had met the criteria. So, but I think our numbers are real good in, in the region. And, and I just prepared a post, as when this meeting ends, I'm gonna correct it and I will be posting it that talks about our numbers. You know, we haven't had very many positive numbers in the last four or five days. I want to say we went two days by a holding serve with zero, zero positive cases, zero deaths, which was very encouraging. And we saw similar numbers throughout region four. So I think things are looking real positive, at least from, from my perspective, that I hope, I really hope that we have that reopening sooner rather than later. I joke with people that if I don't get a haircut soon, I'm gonna get a tattoo, because my hair's getting pretty long.
Well, you can't get a tattoo, because they're close, too.
Maybe an earring or, or something, but it, the hair is getting long. My wife volunteered to, to help me out, but she had a razor in one hand and my life insurance policy in the other, so I declined her offer.
If you want either a tattoo or ring, I'll pay for it.
Any other comments? This was a unique meeting, probably historic, and hopefully on May the nineteenth, we're meeting in person in St. Martinville. But no other business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Fugel. Second by Mr. Tozan. Ready for the vote, Mr. Fugel.
Yes.
Mrs. Robaties.
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse.
Yes.
Mr. Poirier.
Yes.
Mr. Tozan.
Yes.
Mr. Charpin.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, meeting adjourned, thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.